Okay, a call meeting to order, Wolfboro Board of Selectmen's Special Meeting, Thursday, December 29, 2022, at 5:00. We're at the Wolfboro Public Library, the Beaver Room, 259 South Main Street. Any need for any non-public tonight?
There is not, Mr. Jones.
Okay, we have no minutes. Public hearings, we don't have any. Ballot vote will take up next week. No committee for new business investment policy. Yes, we're gonna turn over to you and Casey.
Casey.
Casey, yes. I gave you a memo today. You previously got a copy of the investment policy, but I've attached an updated investment policy, policy number FIN 003, that needs to be reviewed and approved by the town manager and board of selectmen annually. This document is in a new format with minor changes, but primarily the same as the policy has been in the past. And this policy was also reviewed by the treasurer. And it also was reviewed by New Hampshire PBIP, which we will start using in January to make sure that it is incorporated in the policy, which it was previously incorporated. Are there any questions on the investment policy or changes? If not, could somebody make a motion to approve the investment policy, FIN 003, Division 00, as recommended by the finance director?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All is in favor? Aye.
Aye. Brian's an aye.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Look at my second.
Okay, encumbrances for 2022.
That again is me. Yep. I have attached a list that represents the encumbrances requested by the town of Wolfboro Department Heads. I've also included warrant articles for your review and consideration. I've segregated the requests encumbrances by fund, general, water, electric, and sewer. I also included donations, as we previously have done in the past. This is a first blush. This would be the most money that we would carry over. But over the next few weeks, we will continue to pay off year 2022 bills that come in. And so this number will go down. It is quite a large number, almost 13 million, but that is because some of the big projects that have not taken place. There are quite a few here. It is like a 13-page document. I have broken it out. The general fund's operating budget is, carryover is similar to what it was in the past. It was $701,000 last year. It's about $783,000 this year. Sewers, over $2 million. And electric's over $2 million because of the projects that have not been completed yet. I know you're just seeing this for the first time. As I said, the numbers will be coming down and some things will be coming off the list. But it is recommended to do this before year ends so that we can make sure that we carry over monies to '23 as appropriate. So if you do have any questions after tonight, I'd be more than happy to answer them now or later in the future.
So will you give us another printout once you've paid down those? And so we'll have one just for your question.
Yes, so this is what is being requested. And then at the end of the process, when we shut off '22, which might be a couple months down the road because when the auditors get here, but we end up with an actual encumbrance list.
Okay, you'll give us that?
Yes.
Okay.
So if there's no further questions, I would somebody make a motion to encumber the not-to-exceed amount of $12,874,380.59 for 2022, as recommended by the department heads and the finance director.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye. Brian's an aye.
Okay. Okay, next we have estimated revenues. Casey?
The attached is a 2023 estimated revenue as of today. The worksheet compares November '22 actuals with the '22 budget and the '23 estimated revenue. This worksheet will change as the warrant articles are finalized. It is the policy to update estimated revenues with DRA in September before the next tax rate is set. Estimated revenues do not need a motion, but will be incorporated in the 2023 proposed budget document, MS 737, that the DRA requires, that will be reviewed at the deliberative session. Again, we do not need a motion, but I wanted to put this in front of you. It will change if warrant articles go up or down or get taken off the ballot, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay, next is the default budget.
The attached is the 2023 default budget by fund and list of adjustments made to the prior-year approved operating budget. The default budget is compared to the prior-year operating budget and the current proposed budget committee budget as of 12/27/22. So we take the operating budget off the ballot of last year. We take out any one-time purchases. We add in any contractual things like salaries and benefits and any contracts, like the solid waste contract. It is all detailed out in the report. We break it out by fund. Currently, it is a difference of $442,751, but as the budget committee continues to change their budget, that their number will change. So the difference between prior and our default budget stays the same, but the delta between what is gonna end up on our ballot will continue to change until the budget committee finalizes their budget. The default budget currently is at $30,669,065. Do you have any questions?
That's good to me.
So if nobody has any questions, I'd ask somebody to make a motion to approve the 2023 default budget in the amount of $30,669,065, excuse me, I said that wrong, for 2023, as recommended by the finance director.
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye. Brian's an aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Warrant articles.
Okay, we're gonna try and keep this fairly quick and to the point. Brian, I'm gonna try not to disconnect you because I've got two things going on at once, so we'll see what we can do here.
If I get disconnected, if I get disconnected, I'll call Linda on her cell.
Okay, so warrant articles. Warrant articles. First article up is we've completely rescinding the previous language you had for the fire truck. And we're coming forward to you with two different options. Option one is to see if the town will authorize the selectmen to enter into a long-term lease purchase agreement in the amount of $850,000 payable over a term of four years for the purpose of entering into a lease purchase agreement for a replacement fire department engine pumper and to raise and appropriate the sum of $200,000 in 2023 for the down payment to be followed by three annual payments. Currently estimated as follows. 2023, $200,000, year one deposit. 2024, $238,175, year two payment. 2025, $238,175 for year three. And year four payment, $238,175. This lease purchase agreement does not include an escape clause. Estimated tax rate impact for 2023, eight cents per thousand. 2024, nine cents per thousand. 2025, nine cents per thousand. 2026, nine cents per thousand. And again, that's at today's valuations. And the interesting thing about a lease purchase of this magnitude requires a three-fifths majority because you're committing future funds. The second option is all the same language, except it's an additional year. And it drops the annual payments to $192,000.
Eight-two.
I'm sorry, $182,414. And it takes the tax rate impact and it brings it to seven cents in the annual payments. To back this up, what our problem here is, apparatus, we're seeing significant problems with a frame and engine on one of the pieces of equipment. We made an agreement with the chief that we'd downsize the fleet. But when we downsize the fleet, we would create a better replacement cycle. That's what we're doing. Right now, fire apparatus market is extremely volatile, as we've seen with the ladder truck. Escalation's unpredictable. And currently, brand-new fire apparatus lead time is 600 days plus. Currently, if we were to do this, it is a cash purchase. It would require $550,000 in a single-year appropriation, which would be 22 cents on the tax rate. So our solution is to enter into a four- or five-year lease purchase agreement for $850,000. The lease payment would become part of the fire department's budget. We have found a piece of apparatus where a community has declined the surcharge that we were able to navigate through. So there's a truck that's already kind of in construction, reducing the lead time to 300 days. This would require no capital reserve contributions be made going forward until the final payment is made. Creates a practical replacement cycle. 10 years first due, 10 years second due, and then retire after 20 years. Next major apparatus replacement would be scheduled in 2033 or '34, based on the current fleet. And then the next page lays out the lease options for you, which the chief put together, three to five years. Shows you the various interest rates and the monthly or the annual costs. Down below, we broke that out so you could see what the actual interest payments annually would be. And we think we've got a good program here. As stated, the chief has had his committee look at this piece of equipment. This piece of equipment, it's my understanding, the cab's already manufactured. A lot of the equipment's already on site. It's just a matter of getting it back into the schedule for build. And it meets about 90% of their needs. And it seems like it's a very good bank for a buck. We have a letter from Seagrave. In that letter, it expresses a cash-on-delivery payment of $849,432. They understand that we have to get through town meeting. They're willing to hold this price and this apparatus until town meeting. And they're willing to hold that to us till we can get a contract in March '25 of 2023. So we're recommending through this board that you consider the three- or the four-year option. The three-year option, again, those out years would be nine cents on the tax rate. The four-year option would be seven cents on the tax rate. And that would be in line with what we do for a capital reserve appropriation anyways. We just wouldn't raise and appropriate those funds through the CIP process until the truck is paid off. So it's the board's discretion as to which, if any, that you wanna go with. But we're recommending either the two or either the three or the four-year contract.
Jim, I have a question.
Fire away.
Could we then suspend money put in for equipment for one, two, three, or four years after the purchase of this truck to give the taxpayers a break, knowing that we don't need a new truck till '2034? Is that possible?
That's absolutely.
At least one, two?
That's absolutely possible, and it's actually expressed in the solution. No fire apparatus capital reserve contributions until the final payment is made.
Yeah, I would go for the four-year. And what I did is, last year, our payment into the fire truck capital reserve account was $964. To me, that's already incalculated in the $2 million that we usually spend in cash. So if we go to 2024 and we do it four years, it would be $182,414, which would be less. And we're asking people to reach into their pockets and pay for a public safety building. So I would like to have the smallest impact carried over the long run for them. And so this would mean that in future years, we would be asking less from the taxpayers than what we ask for now to put in the capital reserve. So, and I calculated. They calculated the difference, and the interest is $649. And I think just to not. I really am concerned as asking for too much this year while we're trying to get the public safety building in. So that's my reasoning.
Is that a motion? For the four-year plan?
I didn't know whether anybody else wanted.
No?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just chief, do you have anything you'd like to make comment about?
Not really. Obviously, we're happy with either option. We understand the situation I think the town is in. And the more we can do to minimize the impact, I think the better off we all are. At the end of the day, we end up in the same place on the replacement schedule and so forth. I did do a spreadsheet, like, and I apologize for, I mean, I was running around out of breath because this is literally happening in real time. I did do a spreadsheet this afternoon to kind of see how it plays out over 10 years. And because we're in that lull with our, under our current service model, we wouldn't be buying another piece of apparatus until 2032 or '33 or '34. It still works.
Chief, is the financing in-house through Seagrave? Or is that the?
It's a third-party leasing company, as I understand it, that they do a lot of business with, obviously. But I contacted them separately from Fleetmasters and had them run those scenarios that you see.
We looked at this a couple years ago, and we actually reached out to a couple local lending institutions. They couldn't beat this. What I would say is, if this thing passes, we will reach out to a couple local lending institutions to see if we can find a better interest rate or match it. But, yeah, so, you know, this is simple for them to put together. They deal with these every day. And, you know, if this thing passes, I think the takeaway is we'll do a little bit of shopping.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye. Aye. Brian's an aye.
Okay.
Next one is police vehicle replacement. And the police commission and the chief are here to speak with to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $66,000 for the purchase of a police cruiser replacement vehicle, an ancillary vehicle or equipment, with $5,000 from the police detail revolving fund created by Article 23 in 2006, which has accumulated from special details in prior years. Additionally, this warrant article also grants permission to the Wolfboro Police Commission to dispose of one existing cruiser by sale, auction, trade, or disposal with any proceeds to be returned to the town's general fund. Estimated tax rate impact, 2023, three cents per thousand. Assess valuation, recommended by the police commission by a vote of 3-0. You guys actually, we did recommend this, but you didn't recommend to move it forward until you had spoke with the police commission.
I think we just were waiting for their vote. Which is here, so a lot of comfort there, wasn't it?
Well, somebody want to just motion to move warrant article one?
Police vehicle replacement? Aye. Is that one? One, okay.
Second. Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
And just the housekeeping.
Brian's an aye.
Just the housekeeping issue. I think we need to move the fire truck due to warrant as well. We didn't do that. So moved, move fire truck warrant article.
The second option.
Second option.
I'll second.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next one is school resource officer, middle school. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $72,706 for the purpose of creating a new position within the Wolfboro Police Department effective June 5, 2023. During the regular school year, this position shall be assigned to the position of school resource officer, police officer, SRO for the middle school. The remaining of time outside of the regular school year, this position shall be assigned as a town of Wolfboro police officer. The school district, SAU 49, shall pay the town of Wolfboro 50% of payroll benefits, which is $22,338 for this position for up to 73 school days, August 2023 to December 2023. You have a matrix here that breaks down the chart. This position shall be created and filled only if the town warrant article and the SAU operating budget pass. If both articles are successful, this position shall be fully funded in future years with the SAU 49 paying half of the payroll and benefits for up to 108 days outlined above. Estimated tax rate impact, 2023, two cents per thousand. And I believe the chief and the police commission are here to speak on behalf of this article. And I believe there's some sub-board members who have some questions.
Mr. Chair, before we go any further, I would propose a change to the warrant article language. And that would read that rather than the SAU 49 operating budget, we say the SAU 49 warrant article. I've been communicating with both the school board chair. This warrant article, as it's written currently, was based on information I got from Jack Widmer when we had a school safety forum at the high school a short while ago. And I spoke with Jack before the meeting, and he said, "We're gonna put this money in our operating budget." That's what led us to this point. I just learned recently that now they're going to go forward with a warrant article. And I talked to both the superintendent and Jack. And they're pushing forward about a $60 million budget this year, which they expect some pushback on, I could imagine. So what they want to do is to be transparent and open to their voters. So they are going to meet on January 9th in non-public to discuss this warrant article. So.
Okay, here's the pro. Whoa, whoa, hold on.
Hang on, let's see if it's finished, Brian.
Okay.
So, I mean, the way that the warrant article is written, it gives both entities an out if both entities don't pass this. But on January 9th, they'll vote on establishing a warrant article. I've sent this exact sheet to the school superintendent so that they have the numbers to budget for an entire year because they're on a fiscal year budget. So they will budget that way. But that's entirely up to them, obviously. But this is representative. The town would be expected to pay this year. So, yeah, I'll take any questions, Brian.
So I have a little bit of a problem. If this is a non-public issue, it shouldn't be discussed right now.
Okay, I apologize.
We should not, that's breaking 91A laws. We should not be discussing the subject matter of a non-public meeting that may be, and I don't know if it's happening or if they're actually speaking on it. I have no idea, on January 9th. The second thing I have is the Governor Wentworth Regional School District has not discussed hiring a second SRO in public or non-public meeting. The GW RSD superintendent told the Wolfboro Police Commissioners and the police chief that the GW RSD was not exploring hiring another SRO at the November 9 GW RSD school safety forum, which was filmed on YouTube. The police commissioners discussed and voted for a warrant article to fund an SRO position at their November 17 meeting filmed on YouTube. At this meeting, Chief Rondo and the police commissioners told Tom Bell that the position would be combined with a part-time summer officer, so it could be a full-time position, with the goal of decreasing overtime hours. Overtime hours were not decreased in the police department's proposed budget. Chief Rondo and the police commissioners also claimed SRO Mary Divine has too large a caseload and needs support. The Kingswood campus includes Crescent Lake Elementary. It does not. And that campus population has increased since the first SRO position was established in 2000. The Kingswood campus population has not increased. As of December 20, the Governor Wentworth Regional School District superintendent and all the school board members had no idea about the proposed warrant article. It was discussed at the Governor Wentworth Regional School District Finance Subcommittee, not the school board. And there was no intention to hire another SRO for Kingswood Regional Middle School or the Kingswood Campus. The Kingswood Campus population has not increased or decreased since 2000. Crescent Lake Elementary is not a part of the Kingswood Campus. No staff overlap or sharing, no facility sharing, and no SRO sharing between Crescent Lake Elementary and the Kingswood Campus. The school board has not discussed or approved hiring another SRO, and there is not written proof of that being the case. So I think there's a lot of questions about this. And I think we have to seriously look at all the mechanisms, where it's coming from, where it's going. Don't say, I'm not saying that we shouldn't necessarily need and look into this. Not saying that the police department couldn't use another summer employee, but these are the facts.
Can you go back to, Brian, and explain again? There was a, about a conversation with the chief and Tom Bell about mixing a part-time with a full-time?
Well, according to, hold on. Yeah, let me check my notes. Gotta find my notes. Let's see here. Where am I? So on November 17, I want to make sure I have the right date meeting, which was filmed on YouTube. Chief Rondo, the police commissioners, told Tom Bell that the position would be combined with a part-time summer officer, so it could be a full-time position with the goal of decreasing overtime hours.
I think that's a misunderstanding.
So anybody who wants, you can go see that on that YouTube video for that meeting.
Okay. I think that's a misunderstanding, Brian, because when we first proposed to the school district, we originally proposed two additional SROs, one to handle the elementary schools that are having issues, the two elementary schools in town, and one specifically for the middle school. In a subsequent call with the superintendent, she said, "The other towns will not go for a second one to cover specifically Wolfboro schools." So we took our juvenile services officer, repositioned that part-time position to a part-time SRO to cover Crescent Lake and Carpenter School. Unfortunately, with everything going on for middle school right now, we're spending a great deal of time there, which is not what our purpose was in moving that position forward. But contrary to what some people think, if somebody is on the school compound, whether it be at the high school, the middle school, whatever, if there's an issue on that compound, the SRO will surely respond to keep people safe and so forth. That's.
Again, from my point of view, I'm not saying we don't need an officer. I'm looking at the logistics right now. And I don't think that it's been discussed in the school with the school board, the school finance committee, and the superintendent to the extent that it seems. And I don't think it's been even discussed as having the money in their budget or anything going forward. So I don't know how we approve and push forward a warrant article if there's no money that's been appropriated or if it's even been discussed. That's my only concern.
Jim, how long do we have before we have to have this put together?
January 10th, is it, or something?
No, I think it was. We're talking about posting a warrant, aren't we?
Yeah, I think, well, I'd say the 17th is the last date.
But the public hearing is the 11th. So if the public doesn't get to see this, then I.
This is not on, the public hearing is at the deliberative session. You don't have.
Yeah, and the public hearing.
The budget committee has a public hearing on the 10.
On the budget.
On the budget, yes. Which is all.
They will vote on the warrant articles anticipated at that time.
But if we say to them, "We need to clear this up." I think that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about throwing this out. We're saying, "Let's get it clear. Let's go forward with it in the right way." They could always have an extra meeting to vote on it because they don't have. They could always have an extra meeting to vote on it, because they don't, "I have to have a public hearing on it, I don't believe."
Yeah, I worked in, in, in elementary school for fourteen years, and I, and I saw a lot of times when even at the elementary school level, there was a lot of issues that could have used support. So again, I'm going to reiterate it for the third time. I am not against this warrant article. I am not against, um, a position for a summer police officer or an SRO. I just think that we need to be transparent, and I think that we need to know that the school board, the school, um, budget committee, and, um, the, the superintendent are all on the same page with the police commission, that monies are available, that it has been discussed appropriately in public and in non-public session. Um, we shouldn't know about, a, a discussion about this in non-public. That shouldn't be something that should be even spoken about at this point. So we need to straighten this out and, and then go forward.
Regardless, Brian, if, sorry, regardless, Brian, if the, uh, if we vote for it.
Yes.
And then, then the school board, you know, the school board may hold the meeting, and half the school board may vote against it, the members, and it won't pass. So, and then still, even at that point, you know, even if we vote for it, they don't vote for it, then we still made our point, Mr. Chair.
And it's dead, too.
Yeah, it's dead.
So I, Luke, Luke, thank you. Luke is a, Luke is absolutely correct. Um, the, whether this, this on board votes to, to put this on the, on the warrant, I think, um, uh, it matters not, meaning that if you, if you vote to approve this, uh, after you get the rest of your questions answered, uh, and the, and the school board doesn't vote to put it in on their warrant article and their operating budget, whatever they're going to do, um, that's fine. It, it doesn't get funded. So to me, it's, it's, it's really an issue, we're, we're fighting over an issue that I, I think is irrelevant, right? Because it clearly says in the warrant article, uh, both have to pass. So the school board is going to have a meeting on the ninth. I believe this is going to be one of their agenda items, and I think if the board's electmen votes to support this and, and put the school resource officer position, and we sent a clear message to the school board that, hey, we're all in favor of this, let's move forward. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I guess my feeling with that, Dean, we're back, we're asking for a twelve-point-five million dollar warrant article. I don't want this on the warrant if it's not real. I'm concerned, that's my first thing that I believe needs to get. I have no problem with this. The only thing I would like in the wording, I'd like to know the number of the school districts warrant when they do it, and so that's in the wording. But I would like us to get them to have it, and then us to have special letters and to vote it in. And so it's all in the sequence. The budget committee won't vote on the warrant articles until we vote it on. We didn't want to vote on them until you. It's, it's the process, and if it's going to die, I want that public safety building to go and get this one off the, off the warrant. If it can go and they vote for it, we put it on, and we're all together. That's where I come from.
Well, it sounds like they're, they're having a meeting on the ninth, and I think that we should wait until we hear from them as far as, that's what I'm hearing, as far as what their attitude is, before we vote on it.
I concur.
Well, can I speak? I, I, I would be against that. I think it's, you know, from a police commission standpoint, I think it's, you know, important for everyone that's in this room today for us, you know, to take a stand on an important issue like this. One of the reasons I think, you know, uh, in this case, important public safety, right? Public safety, uh, or safety of the schools needs to be put in front of the people. Let them decide that. Let's do our job, put on a warrant article. To me, there, there is no more important issue than this right now. You know, we, we see what's going on across, across the country. We've seen a few little instances that happened, likely turned out great, um, in, in town just the past ten days. Let the people decide this. It's our job to put, put it forward, let them decide if it's important enough for them to vote on it. And, and I think it, it speaks volumes from us, uh, as leadership, that we think it's important enough to be put before the people, and then let the school board decide what they do. You know, it, it, again, it's, they have a fifty percent stake in this. And if they decide no, then so be it. But I think it's the proper time to do it now. It's not rocket science, it's basic public safety. And times are the essence. And, uh, you know, I think it's important that, you know, we take the leadership on this.
I don't think there's any harm in voting to put this on the, uh, on the warrant at all.
I think we have a process. I guess that's my feeling. We have a process that we follow. I think it will go on, I think they will do it, and we will follow that. The warrant's not going out to the end of January. It's not like this is going to be off, and then all of a sudden we run and put it on. If they don't approve it, it's dead. So that's my concern, and, and I think, I'd like us to, uh, keep to the process. I'm sure we can make arrangements with the budget committee alone after this.
And I'll make some calls, too, to ensure that once they've made a decision, um, that we have their warrant article, um, designation, number, letter, whatever it is, um, uh, so that it's correctly worn.
I think that's.
Hey, what if they, what if they, what if they want to go forward with it, but they want something changed, a different wording, something else, something that they do affects what we've already approved, then we're back and we're, and we're backtracking, we're changing what we already approved. It, it doesn't make sense to go forward without knowing what their plans are and that they, that they want to go forward with it, and they have the money in their budget, and they're set to do.
I think, Brian, that they, they already understand that there's a current contract that's been renewed a number of times, and the language for an SRO at the middle school would contain that same language. So I don't think there's going to be any changes. Um, I mean, whatever the semantics are on their side, um, that's, they can figure that out, but at the end of the day, they're going to sign a contract if both the town and the school district pass this, they will sign a contract committing their, their half roughly to this position. Um, they, they know, they know what it entails, I guess is my opinion.
I think we're making this too difficult, to be honest with you. I, I think we're really, folks, be honest with you, I think we're really goofing this up. We are really overthinking this. This is, I agree with Commissioner Coop, this is a no-brainer.
Casey?
But, but I believe I'm hearing the board is, um, has an issue with the semantics, not actually the, the.
Correct, correct.
Not actually the warrant article. So, I'm going to say that the process is the SAU is going to meet on the ninth, and then the budget committee might be meeting on the tenth to have their public hearing on the eleventh. We have a small window, in my opinion, because the twelfth is another day that they might have a public hearing, but then they're done, and we've got to get the forms ready for deliberative session. So unless, I believe that we should wait till the ninth, try to finalize this by the eleventh. And I, I, I think that both parties would agree with that.
And we can call a special meeting, right?
Yeah. Is that a motion you just made?
I did make that.
Who wants to second that?
You did.
I'll second that.
And we'll have a meeting on the, on the tenth, so that we can be.
We can, we can do that.
Or the eleventh, in front of the budget committee's meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I think we have one scheduled anyways, as the, uh.
Right, as a snow date, right.
Right, right, that's, between nine and twelve, there's going to be meetings, and we might not need them all, but I think we can squish it in.
What they generally say, okay.
Nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, you should have blocked off, but we probably won't need all of them.
Thank you.
Sorry. No, ten, eleven, twelve.
Forget about your social schedule.
Yeah. What's the topic?
Did you second that?
I hope the police, I hope the police commission understands that we are not, um, checking our responsibility for safety. We are not trying to interfere with, um, that type of.
This has been way updated.
We just need to follow the proper procedure. I, I hear that the board doesn't have a, um, just be speaking for whatever, if they don't have an issue.
This is like pulling teeth.
But I, we're, we're all set.
Yeah.
I think, did we make the motion?
Yeah, I made that motion.
Yeah. Do we have a motion and a second? All of them paper?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Who was the second?
Brad was.
Right.
That puts pressure on them.
Town report, bid award.
I'll reach out to them. They'll be able to send away.
Yeah.
To the, to the superintendent.
I guess this was in your pa- what, would you like me to speak on it?
Please.
Okay. Um, this was in your package. I'm speaking on behalf of Amy, uh, the executive assistant. Uh, we went out to bid for the annual town report. Um, the bid was opened on December twenty-second. We received three bids, one from County Press, three thousand ninety-five, one from RC Brash, Braschow, three, three thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars, and one from Fox Press, five thousand and thirty-six. We have used County Press and RC Braschow before. Uh, we are looking for seven hundred and twenty copies on eight and a half by eleven, so the big ones. We're getting away from the small ones with approximately two hundred pages. Um, uh, Amy is recommending that we go with Country, which is the lowest bidder and is the same company who printed the town report last year.
They did a nice job. The one before that was small and smudged.
So you can call the date that we have to have them.
Okay, so I'll make, I'll make that up.
Brad, would you like to make the motion to accept the bid with Country Press for three thousand and ninety-five dollars?
I do.
And I'd like to second.
Okay.
All of them?
All of them? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Any other business?
Did we, uh, did my thing get sent around?
It did.
It did, I even had time to read it.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm going to work on it. I didn't know Amy was out until tomorrow, so I sent it to her yesterday, so I don't know if she may, may have made some, uh, things to it, too. But, uh, if you want to read it, just get it back to me.
Didn't send anything.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a rough draft, and I'm not, I'm not personally attached to it, though I just spent an hour and a half trying it. Married to it, however.
Okay, any, any other business? Committee reports, are they ready?
No, I didn't.
Okay, town managers' report.
I just, I'd like to make a statement for everybody to know. Um, we're having problems again at the town hall on the clock tower, um, slate coming off the roof. We've been in contact with, um, the roofing company, and that sidewalk has been closed off. Um, and then the only other thing is, um, I believe it's the third, um, of January, Pop Whalen opens, and we will be having kids and hopefully adults skating on the ice. I believe the chief withdrew the permit process today.
Jim, does, um, will our insurance cover the damage to the roof, or will the company who did the original install, will they honor, um, their work?
I cannot answer that question at this time.
I think the roof was installed in the eighteen hundreds, so they probably won't honor that.
Probably not. Maybe.
Well, I didn't know, I didn't know they looked at that slate.
They, so they, they did not look at that portion of the roof because they couldn't get that high. Um, so we have got an issue. We may have to press a ladder truck in the service.
We may have a truck in a few weeks.
I can practice.
Somebody with a camera, good to go.
Okay, any questions from the press?
She's online. She's still muted, so I'm going to say.
No.
That Alyssa has no questions.
Any public input? Suzanne, you got anything? Okay. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah.
All of them paper?
Aye.